All right, calling to order tonight, the May 7, 2025, regularly scheduled city council meeting, starting at 7:00 PM, please rise and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, as we did at the six o'clock meeting, we have our executive assistant filling in for our city clerk, who is still going through some health issues, so Crystal Hilton is going to be our city clerk this evening, she will now call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Iwano?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Sutel?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Okay, all eight councilmembers are here, next item on the agenda is the agenda approval, do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Luther made a motion, and Councilmember Iwano seconded the motion for the approval of tonight's agenda, are there any changes? Anybody? No changes, I see none.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know, does it, it's not on the agenda, written on the agenda, it's written on one of the resolutions, Councilmember Norris will be reading resolution R. 2502.
That's great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all in favor of tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, the agenda for tonight's meeting is approved, we do not have any public comments this evening, I do want to let people know that are here this evening, that we now have a sign in the back that states the council rules in writing, and going forward, I will not be announcing the rules at the beginning of the public comment portion, all right, thank you, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motions made for the approval of the minutes from April the 16th by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, any changes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, no changes, okay, the minutes for April 16th are approved, thank you, tonight, I have one appointment, and I'm going to ask you to approve, and it's in front of you, and Mrs. Schaffner was on historical commission previously, she's been serving in auxiliary capacity for the past four or five years, and she's asked to be reappointed, so with your favorable approval, she is in Ward 4, would a councilmember from Ward 4?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris, to approve, Alice Schaffner is being reinstated to the historical commission, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, we have council officer elections for chairperson and treasurer, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to nominate Ward 3 Councilmember Gretchen Luke as Chair of City Council.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Sutel, to nominate Councilmember Luke for the chairperson position for City Council, okay, are there any other nominations? I see none, I hear none, nominations are closed, council, this will be a roll call vote. Crystal?
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, Councilmember Luke becomes the chairperson of the City Council for the next year, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion or nomination for treasurer, Councilmember Westy?
I move to nominate Bob Sutel, Ward 1, for treasurer.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmember Luke, to nominate Councilmember Sutel for treasurer for the upcoming year, any other nominations? I see none, I hear none, nominations are closed for treasurer, the city clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, Councilmember Sutel is approved for the treasurer position for the upcoming year, congratulations, Mr. Sutel, thank you, next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution, first is resolution 25-01, it's a municipal park grant for Halibush Park, Councilmember Westy?
I move for passage of resolution number 2501.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmember Sutel, for passing or approving resolution 25-01, continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Continue.
You've got to read it first.
Yeah, resolution 2501 is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, supporting the Parks and Recreation Department's planning grant application through the Municipal Park Grant Commission for renovation at Halibush Park.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so this is by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, the municipal park grant for Halibush Park, resolution 25-01 is approved, next item is resolution 25-02, and that is going to be Councilmember Norris.
Thank you, Mayor, motion to accept resolution R. 25-02.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Hood, for the acceptance of resolution 25-02, any discussion? I see none, this is by voice vote, all in favor? Or you need to, you need to read it first?
Yes, sir, I need to read it, thank you, I just, no confusion, when I read this and mention the word Blue Shield, has nothing to do with the insurance agency, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, City Council Resolution Supporting Participation in the Missouri Blue Shield Program to Strengthen Law Enforcement and Community Safety, Mayor, may I read the whole thing, I think it's very important, or just?
Proceed.
All right, thank you, whereas, on March 5, 2025, Governor Mike Kehoe announced the launch of the Missouri Blue Shield Program, offering counties, cities, and towns the opportunity to receive a Blue Shield designation and recognition of their commitment to enhancing public safety, supporting law enforcement, and building long-term safety participa- partnership, I'm sorry, partnership, and whereas, the Blue Shield Program, established under the Executive Order 25-3, is a key component of Governor Kehoe's Safer Missouri Initiative, introduced at the start of his administration, and whereas, communities that earn the Blue Shield designation become eligible to receive state funding for law enforcement training, equipment, and related public safety initiatives, and whereas, maintaining a professional, well-trained police force is essential to ensuring the safety and security of Missouri's residents, neighborhoods, and visitors, and whereas, strong collaborative relationships between law enforcement and the community are critical to crime reduction, and to building mutual trust and transparency, and whereas, public safety is a shared responsibility that requires the active involvement of community members, leaders, and local government in participation in partnership with law enforcement, and whereas, citizen engagement and accountability play a vital role in crime prevention and overall community well-being, and whereas, it is both appropriate and beneficial to recognize local governments that are committed to promoting public safety, supporting law enforcement personnel, and fostering effective community partnerships, and whereas, the city of Bridgeton and its residents stand to benefit from participation in the Missouri Blue Shield Program through improved safety resources and enhanced community policing efforts, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Missouri as follows, section 1, the City Council of Bridgeton hereby declares its full support for participation in the Missouri Blue Shield Program, and affirms its continued dedication to public safety, including efforts to reduce violent crime, and strengthen community law enforcement relations in accordance with the goals of the Blue Shield Initiative, my vote is aye.
Okay, this is voice vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, eight to nothing, so this resolution, R. 25-02, is approved, thank you, next item on the agenda?
I would like to, oh, thank you, Mayor.
Is resolution 25-03, Waste Management Program, Councilmember Iwano?
I would like to make a motion to approve R. 25-03, which is resolution of the city of Bridgeton City Council endorsing St. Louis County's grant program for the city's waste reduction efforts.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Iwano, seconded by Councilmember Patel, for the passage of resolution 25-03, any discussion? I hear none, she read the line already, so this is by voice vote also, the city clerk will call, or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, see none, resolution 25-01, 03 is passed, we have no public hearings this evening, no permits, waivers, or appeals, next item on the agenda is going to be consideration of new bills, bill number 6492, Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor, I make a motion to read bill 6492.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, for first reading of bill number 6492, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, please continue.
Thank you, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with Bluegrass Lawn Care of St. Louis LLC, for the mowing of I-270 and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 1, and North Lindbergh Boulevard and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 2, in an amount of $24,950, the project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $10,000, I'd like to suspend council rules?
Second.
For a second reading?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, for suspending council rules for the second reading of bill number 6492, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, I make a motion for a second reading of bill 6492.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, for the second reading of bill number 6492, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, please proceed.
Thank you, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with Bluegrass Lawn Care of St. Louis LLC, for the mowing of I-270 and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 1, and North Lindbergh Boulevard and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 2, in an amount of $24,955, the project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $10,000, I make a motion for bill 6492 to become ordinance number?
25-17.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, that bill number 6492 become ordinance 25-17, discussion, Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor, so both of these bills, as you may recall, we had $100,000 budgeted in this year's budget for mowing, maintaining, some of the property that MoDOT is responsible for maintaining, this, these two contracts are to expend that money and get the mowing done, and the reason we're doing the two readings is so that the Public Works Department can get started on getting the permits and getting things in place to start mowing the week of May 18th, the frequency for both of these is planned to be every two weeks, with an altered schedule as needed for weather or drought, or to work around MoDOT's existing schedule, included will be trash pickup, every time there's mowing, they'll take the trash away with them, and then they will also do two additional trash pickups in the winter months, November and December, the MoDOT permit is required, and Mr. Gunn said that he can get started on that right away as soon as these are approved, will be for our contractor to be on the MoDOT property.
Thank you, Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I just want to say, this is important, it's a decision that we made really a couple of years ago, and I think this year in particular, with the tornado, and all hands on deck, really, to clean up that effort, it's really easy to let things slip and slide a little bit, so I'm really happy to see that this is moving forward, and thank you very much for hustling this together, because I think it's very important for the benefit of the community.
Councilmember Norris?
Yes, sir, I, I agree with this, reluctantly, I wish we didn't have to spend the money on this, but we have to take responsibility, our council, our city takes pride, and we want to, we keep getting the blame, so we need to make sure that we take care of the trash, so I am definitely for this, I, again, I wish we didn't have to do it, but somebody has to do it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay, any, any councilmembers, oop, Councilmember Sutel?
Yes, this map, the Rock Road and Lindbergh, does not include this small little triangle there, where the curb is right there, is there a reason why we didn't write in front of Scott's Part Equipment? I know there's some grass there, and it gets a lot of tall weeds in that same little triangle, I'm just kind of asking right there, it's not on the map.
They were mowing, when we talked to them last year, they were mowing that themselves, and then putting their own chemical down.
All right, that's cool, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion, I see none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number 6492 becomes ordinance 25-17, next item on the agenda, first consideration of bill number 6493, again, Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with MACC contracting for the mowing of I-70 and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 3, and North Lindbergh Boulevard, and Whitehall Manor Drive, area number 4, in an amount of $32,863.90, the project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $23,000 and no change, make a motion to suspend council rules to allow for second reading.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther.
We need to vote on the first one, don't we?
But we didn't have a first, didn't we, we didn't have a first reading of that with an approval, did we?
She just, she just read it.
Okay, without, without the statement ahead of time, okay.
But we got to vote on that.
Count, I mean, wasn't there, there was a motion for first reading, and there was a second, was there no vote on that?
Correct.
There was, she read it.
Oh, no, she read.
So, let, let's just.
Okay, so, motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, to suspend council rules for second reading of bill number 6493, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The vote.
I hear none, continue.
All right, so, and I'll, I'll ask Crystal, did, did you get a vote, and this is not to put you on the spot, but just in case, to figure out if we have to go back and do anything.
Go back and do it again.
Did you get a vote on the first reading, so when Ms. Luke moved for first reading, and Ms. Luther seconded, between that and when Ms. Luke read the, the caption, was there a vote? I just, I didn't.
There wasn't a first reading, there wasn't a motion for a first reading.
Well, there was, I think there was definitely a motion for first reading, yes, yeah.
On the previous one?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
On the previous one?
I think she just read it.
649. Get a vote on it.
649.
All right, let's just, let's just move on, so, we, we had a first reading, everybody heard the first reading, right?
Yes.
So now we have suspended council rules for a second reading, so now the motion for a second reading, please.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion for a second reading of bill 6493.
Second.
Now vote on that motion, please.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, proceed.
Thank you, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with MACC contracting for the mowing of I-70 and St. Charles Rock Road, area number 3, and North Lindbergh Boulevard and Whitehall Manor Drive, area number 4, in an amount of $32,863.90, the project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $23,000, I make a motion that bill 6493 become ordinance number 25-18.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, that bill number 6493 becomes ordinance 25-18, discussion? I see none, I hear none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number 6493 becomes ordinance 25-18, we have no discussion items, next item is the attorney's report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Next item is council communications, as I call your name and you give a report, I'd like you to mention how many years that you've served on council thus far, I appreciate it, thank you, Councilmember Westy?
Hi, I've served two years, so, I'll make this one pretty quick, I just wanted to call out the community center real quick, my mother-in-law was in town for the last 10 days or so, while she was in town, she ended up taking my son up to the community center to use the indoor pool, and whenever she got back, she was telling me how impressed she was, and she was like, how much does it cost for you guys to have a membership there, I told her I didn't remember, so I'd look it up, and just in case you all don't know, a household membership is 330, a single adult membership is 165, a one-in-one membership, which would be two adults, is 300, a youth membership is 120, and if you're lucky enough to be part of Silver Sneakers, you get it for free, the reason I say that is, we had then looked up how much it was for her to get a membership in New Jersey where she lives, and their place doesn't have anything like what we have with a play area, a really nice indoor pool, really nice gym, I mean, it's, it's not a bad place, but it's nowhere near as nice, a single membership alone is 345, and a family membership is 585, so, a household membership is 330 here, for her, a single membership would be 345, so, it's just a really great value we have, and it's something that I really think we should be proud of in Bridgeton, just how nice of a community center we have, I also, earlier this week, had to book a reservation for one of the pavilions for a park, and the people working the phones there are always great and helpful, I didn't tell them who I was, so it's not because I'm like, I'm the city councilor or anything like that, it is just always a really great experience, so, just wanted to give them a shout out, and congratulate them for doing such a great job, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sutel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, yes, I've served 15 years since April 2009, that's 12 plus three, is 15, so that's just the total, if you're wanting to know, total is 16, but I, there's one year I wasn't in there, so, anyway, three things I want to talk about, last Thursday was National Day of Prayer, I went to the, the episode that Joni Norris invited us to, and the mayor wasn't there, no other councilmembers, so I was nominated to help with the proclamation that the mayor issued with Mary Vaughan, and I didn't bring my reading glasses, so with new cataracts taken care, I could, I said, I'm up here, I can help, but I can't read, there were some citizens here in the audience right now that saw me at least stand up there, you know, help represent the city of Bridgeton, so I'm, I'm glad I did that, and that was Thursday morning, turned out very nice, so that turned out good, to, Friday afternoon, I was coming back from doing some work in St. Charles, and I noticed we had three of our Bridgetons dump truck snowplow trucks going down 70 in St. Charles going west, so maybe someone can explain where they were going, all three of them at one time, was there a special event, was there something going on, this was about maybe one or two o'clock Friday afternoon, I'm just guessing about the time, but I was shocked to see three Bridgeton logo trucks heading westbound on 270 out in St. Charles, so that was one of the things I wanted to find out about that, and the third thing I want to talk about, we did finally finish the tree limb pickup throughout Bridgeton, and I really want to thank the crews that were out there, that went over and over and over, because during the month of April, I took down five white pine trees along the edge of my driveway, got them cut up, dragged the limbs out there, my neighbor helped me one day, and it was like, you know, one week, three weeks in a row, I was dragging, I still got a stump to get rid of, and some logs to get rid of, but they really were outstanding as far as that, and I helped them get out the edge, so, you know, kudos to the, to the guys that get out there on the street crew, there were two younger guys, but they worked their tails off too with the, you know, stump grinding going back and forth, and it looked like the last two weeks, they, they did north and south continuously those last two weeks, so, that made it really a lot easier for a lot of people scheduling, because my neighbors saw me dragging out, so they dragged somewhere out there too, but I just want to say thank you for that, that crew that does that, thank you very much, Mayor.
We'll have Mr. Gunn address your question that you had.
That's fine. I have no idea what it was about, maybe it was a special funeral shop, I don't know.
Councilmember Iwano?
Well, I came on board to finish the term out in October of last year, and so this year starts my official service as an elected official.
Any other comments?
She's trying to read them, go ahead, you can, you can tell us what they are.
I'm sorry, I thought we were just giving our, our timeline, I do want to say that I was very pleased I attended the comprehensive plant open house, on Wednesday, the 30th, I, I want to thank everyone who, who put that together, I thought it was very well-done, informative, informational, and I really encourage everyone, if they've not done so already, to complete the survey online, or you can get one that's in paper, really important to participate, it's your community and your voice, and we will be having the next and final open house, it will be coming in June, the date, the specific date's still to be determined, and I also want to thank those who came up with the idea and put the signage in place, that was very helpful to everyone, and informing people of the, the where and the when, and I did attend the National Day of Prayer last week, and I want to give a shout out and a thanks to the city of Bridgeton for participating in that event, it was very nice, it was a morning that I found to be very encouraging and uplifting and inspirational, and, well, next year, come on by, if you did, if you made it this year, that was great, plan on being here May 1st next year, it was very well-done, so thank you, city of Bridgeton, very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor, so I'm serving my fourth year on council, and I just want to say for today, congratulations to everybody that got sworn in today, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luther?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, well, I've been on council two years, I guess, today, so it goes by fast, but I signed up for three more because someone wise said to me, we've got a lot of work to do, so, and you can guess who that person might be to my right, a couple of things, the plant giveaway was a great success, always fun, it's a fun event, if you don't come up to that, you should, it's really a lot of fun, the drug take-back, which was happening in about The drug take-back, which was happening at about the same time out here, I hear, and I know you'll do a report on that, a lot, a lot was, was brought in, which was wonderful, and I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, both to this, to the council meeting and to the, uh, our special meeting prior, and congratulations to everyone sworn in as city council, and especially to new council chair Gretchen Luke and our new treasurer Bob Sutel.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor, and this starts my fifth year, and I don't know if I may be the only council member who's been appointed twice. As Councilmember Patel said, congrats, congratulations again to all the elected officials this year. Um, thank you, Ms. Hilton, for filling in for us and for swearing us all in, you did a fine job, appreciate it. Um, thank you, Mrs. Luther, for the nomination, to all of council for the approval, uh, to represent you this year as chair of the council. Kathy, thank you for serving this past year. Um, I think you were efficient, affected, effective, and represented us professionally, and with standards expected of a city of Bridgeton council member. Thank you, I, I will do my best to continue the high standard that you demonstrated and led us with. Um, as of now, my plan is to continue the subcommittees, but with a couple minor changes, as you'll recall, we have four of them. Um, at the next subcommittee meeting, please select someone else on the committee to preside as the chair, so we'll rotate out the chairs. If anyone would really like to change their subcommittee, please let me know as soon as possible, and we'll see about making that change as well. But otherwise, the only changes we're going to make is the chair. Um, for the council rules subcommittee, uh, currently chaired by council member Hood, that one is pretty much done. So at the next meeting, let's just finish out, uh, what the committee already started, let's get the changes before council for consideration. And then we're going to do something else with that subcommittee. Throughout the previous year, I heard from several, um, employees, staff members, of suggested changes to make to our existing code, some areas that, uh, just need some updates, and some other areas that could possibly use a new code, so we're not going to do a deep dive into code, we're just going to address these specific areas that have been identified by staff and employees. So along that route as well, uh, department heads, if you wouldn't mind, and, uh, Mr. Bookout, start thinking about that information and reaching out to your employees to get their take on it, and then whoever, uh, ends up chairing that subcommittee will be reaching out. Um, let's see. So it has been a, a busy few weeks. Um, Kathy and I had our Ward Three meeting, and we had about twenty attendees this time, and we had some really good interaction, really good questions were asked. Um, so we're really happy to, to continue doing those, those meetings. Um, I attended with Ms. Norris the Uni League Metro of Saint Louis where Mayor Hein was added to the board, congrats, Mayor, on that. Um, got to attend the Saint Luceri Police Chiefs Memorial Prayer Breakfast, and that's always a moving, moving morning, it's a tribute to our fallen officers. Um, the comprehensive plan open house, as Ms. Iowana mentioned, um, Sarah believes that we had at least a hundred people in attendance, and when they took a, a hand pole, most people said that they knew about it because of the signs that were placed around the community, so, we know that those, that signage is effective. I also attended the National Day of Prayer here at City Hall, and last night's Econon Develop Advisory Commission meeting, another good group, getting things done for our community. Um, two weeks ago, my husband and I attended, we sat church, at church with Mr. Fetch and had lunch with him afterwards. Please keep him and his family in your prayers. He lost his son Jim recently, and that funeral, I believe, is the fourteenth, it's on the Collier Funeral Home webpage. Um, the Stormwater Subcommittee will be meeting May twenty-first at six P.M., prior to the next council meeting, and the Cove Meeting will be prior to the,
June.
The first June.
June fourth.
Meeting, thank you, also at six P.M., yep. And then finally, the last thing I have, um, going back to the tornado that we've all put so much time into. A resident, Polly, who lives on Thailand, put together this very nice book with a bunch of pictures, and it just tells us a pictorial story of the cleanup and the efforts, and, it's very nicely done, so if, if you want to take a look at this, I'll have this up here after the meeting, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I was appointed in two thousand and eight, and I have consecutively run, it's sixteen and a half years, so, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve my community. Um, it's good evening, and thanks to all the residents for attending the meeting tonight, and I do want to congratulate my fellow elected council. Best wishes for a successful year, again, I heard we have a lot of work to do, and so, we have to get, hit the road, or the, we got to get busy, sorry. Thanks to staff who took care of the hospitality tonight, uh, it was very lovely, I appreciate that. Um, I attended, a member of the Qantas Club gave a thank-you lunch yes, uh, Tuesday, yes, Bridgeton, uh, for the Bridgeton employees for their outstanding work during the local, uh, the last tornado, I hope this is our last tornado, I'm kind of tired of this, they need to find another area, but March fourteenth, um, you know, they, they came in, you know, that's why I love this place. I said, it's a small town, everybody chips in, and the employees take so much pride, and there's, they care for us so much, so, it was just a little appreciation, we had a small, um, hot dogs and brats, so, it was well-attended, so I do appreciate that. And I just have a question, and it's just been, um, and don't have to give an answer, but I'd sure like to have an update, um, about the hotel progress, the lodge, the Quality Inn, and the Red Roof Inn. Um, are we getting any, is, are we going to get people back there at any time? Uh, again, thanks to the residents of Bridgeton for all their support in the last election, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hood, besides your years of service on council, please, uh, let us know your, your years of service with the city.
Okay, I've, I've served on council for three years, and forty-four years with the police department. And, uh, first of all, I want to congratulate everyone that was re-elected, and I want to apologize for being late this evening. I have been out of town since Sunday morning for a charity event, and it was impossible for me to get back until late this evening, so I hope you understand. And I will tell you that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this city for that amount of years, and, uh, I will always appreciate being a part of the city.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. I'm going to start with, uh, Mr. Kane from Parks and Recreation, please let us know your years of service with the city so far too.
Been with the city for six years, so, time flies when you're having fun. Just another note on the, uh, the plant giveaway, the beautification commission, uh, as well as the food drive, they were able to, um, collect over five hundred pounds of food, and over two hundred dollars in cash donations to the Saint Louis area food bank, so that is a great, great event, and one I look forward to, uh, helping out every year. Um, save the date, Saturday, June fourteenth, for the outdoor pools twentieth anniversary, uh, pool party. Um, it'll be reserved for, uh, residents and members only, uh, as well as employees. Uh, we'll do two thousand and five, uh, throwback pricing on concessions. We'll have some live music, um, some door prizes and things, so it'll be a good time, we're still ironing out some final details, and we'll have a flyer, uh, posted here pretty soon, uh, sometime next week, that's all I've got.
Any questions from council, Mr. Kane? I see none, I'm going to go back across the aisle to Mr. Gunn, Public Works Director.
Alright, uh, the three.
How many years?
Uh, sixteen years. Few more to go. Uh, dump trucks on the highway, um, as you'll see, or you've mentioned, um, the last couple of years, the budget every year, it seems like the truck costs go up. Reason why is there's all kinds of new emissions and computerized, uh, parts of the trucks, so, in the past, our older trucks, to get around, having to drive them around and get them up to a certain temperature, if they hadn't been driven for a couple of days, usually once a week at least, you have to go out, press the button, let them start up, run them through its cycle. However, they don't do that anymore, so the newest trucks, we have to get them on the highway, it's the best way to do it, and drive them around for about a half an hour to get them up to speed, up to temperature, and that'll cook off wherever they need to, to get the emissions, special equipment reset. Otherwise, the computer shuts down the whole truck, and I got to bring the dealership out, and they have to reset the computer, and then sometimes they threaten to have to tow it down to the dealership and run it through its computerized diagnostics, which we usually argue with them, and they usually help us, because it could cost a thousand dollars just to reset the computer, so, it's best, it, uh, get the trucks on the road, those, uh, three newest trucks at least once a week, plus it's a little driver's training for some of our younger, um, employees to get them out there, um, with, with this, these sized trucks, and usually in a safe environment, in the sense where we're doing it on the highway, there's not any traffic, usually, um, we do it either late morning, early afternoon, so it's, if you see them out, it's good because they need to be driven, if they're not driven at least once a week, the computers, they, they hate us and they shut everything down, so they have to be driven, so the fact that they're out, it's good. Um, other things, the shredding event that we had, uh, paper collected, uh, was approximately thirteen hundred pounds. Um, for an event that was, really wasn't advertised until a couple of weeks before the event, that was pretty good, where when we do the Saint Louis County, uh, grant, that has to be advertised in multiple places, website, there's several things they make us do to check the boxes to make sure everybody knows about it, so, um, I'm not too sure what we did with the Saint Louis County, but I was really surprised when we, the totals came in at thirteen hundred pounds, um, just for a couple of weeks of advertisements, that was great. Uh, last thing, the slabs contract for this year, we're still right around fifteen percent completed, Mother Nature is not cooperating. Uh, we had a good concrete pour today on, um, Beaverton and Archington, the bad news is, I think with the rain we had tonight, we're not going to pour anything tomorrow. So basically, we went, eh, almost a whole week, uh, with rain, we weren't able to, uh, pour concrete. There's a few people, a few neighbors that, um, that called the last couple of days with a little bit of unhappiness, so until Mother Nature cooperates, I can only imagine this being kind of a slow go, so you might get some phone calls, the contractor's doing the best he can, uh, we're pouring concrete when Mother Nature allows us to, so we're, we haven't even hit twenty percent yet, and people's patience are beginning to kind of run out, so, just thought I'd give you a quick update, hopefully, if we can get two or three, eh, pretty good weeks of weather in, we can make a, a good-sized dent in it, it's just that right now, it's been a slow go, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Sutel has a question?
Yes, thank, yeah, thank you for the comments on the, on the trucks, because it, it seemed strange, they were all three in a convoy, and they had their snowplow trucks, and it, on, on, the snowplows on the front of trucks, and this was in May, and it's like, this is kind of strange, but maybe the plow helps to bring those temperatures up that you also had, just before they take them off, so I, I thought that was just, good, good to know that, that, that's the reason why they're out there even in different.
Yeah, if they weren't out there, I'd be pretty unhappy with them, because at least once a week, they're going to try.
They were all three lined up together, you know, going, you know, out there, so, alright, thanks.
Alright, back across the aisle to Chief Hood, uh, I'm sorry, Chief Masadi, thank you, and your years of service?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thirty-nine years of service with the city of Bridgeton. Um, just real quick, uh, just wanted to thank everybody that was able to attend the, uh, Saint Louis area police chiefs memorial breakfast, that's always a moving, uh, event, and, uh, us having, uh, representation there really shows that we'll never forget those officers, of both Officer Scott Armstrong and Ernie Brockman that, um, died in the line of duty as Bridgeton officers, so, thank you for attending that. Also, we had a contingent of officers that went up to the state capitol over the weekend, uh, for the governor's, uh, memorial service that they have on the grounds of the capitol. Uh, they do do a wreath laying, the governor was there along with the Attorney General for that, uh, ceremony, so just wanted to pass that along. And then, uh, the prescription drug take-back day was extremely successful, uh, we collected forty-two pounds of prescription drugs that were turned in to be destroyed, so that's, uh, forty-two pounds off the street, and, uh, uh, that was a very successful event, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, um, we've got a question from Councilmember Hood?
It's, it's not so much a question, but Chief Masadi is currently the chair for the Saint Louis area Police Chiefs Association, and he did a tremendous job at the prayer breakfast, and I just wanted him to know that, I was very proud of him and appreciative of what he did, and I know it's not easy to get up there and talk in front of that group, but you did a fantastic job.
Thank you. I echo those comments, as well as, uh, probably the other members of, uh, the, uh, council that were there, and, uh, I think you do a fine, very great job representing the city in the position you're in, thank you, Chief Masadi. Okay, anybody else? Okay, back across the aisle, uh, but before I recognize, uh, Mr. Bookout, I'm going to have the city attorney, uh, address the question that Councilmember Norris had.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and, um, given the fact that we're in active litigation on that, I'll, I'll get you a report, an update, in a privileged fashion, so, uh, it's a fair question, and I'll, like, get you an update.
Thank you. City Administrator, Kevin Bookout?
Yes, uh, I've been with the city ten years this year, um, years of service. Uh, there was a question about the signage, I worked with Zach and Sarah on those signs for the comprehensive plan open house, and I do want to add that the vendor paid for those signs, I think we got fifty printed, and, uh, we're going to do the same thing for the, for the third open house that we have in June. So, that's good to hear that a lot of the residents saw that, so, maybe we'll have them print a hundred for us this, on the next one.
Can we just change the date on the signs we already have?
Well, if they're paying for them, we'll have them print up a hundred new ones.
It's like political science.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, or Mr. Bookout? Um, I was just wondering, I, we've both been busy this week, but, uh, any updates on the, uh, requests for proposals for the, uh, employee staffing study and, uh, wage, uh, study?
Uh, I, I will check with our H.R. coordinator, I know that, uh, we did have a few questions come in, we had a deadline, we sent those out to all of, uh, the vendors that, that, uh, we had sent the proposal, the RFQ, or RFP to, so, um, but I'll get an update on that tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you. Now it's, uh, at the time where the mayor gives a report, please bear with me, it's a little bit long this evening, got a lot to cover, it's been a year since, uh, I took office, so. Uh, first and foremost, of course, prayers for, uh, uh, the Fetch family, including Ford, and then Jim, uh, Jim's wife, Jane, and Jim and Jane's daughter. Uh, and I also would like to ask for prayers, uh, and, and thoughts, uh, for our, uh, city clerk Karen, um, as her, her health, uh, condition, uh, is progressing. Um, and yes, uh, the memorial service, uh, for, uh, Jim Fetch is the fourteenth, uh, from four, four to six P.M. at Collier's Funeral Home. Uh, next, I just want to say congratulations to the, uh, city council members that were, uh, elected or newly elected. Uh, it's great, great to have you here. Um, when I was first, uh, elected last year, I, I think I made the comment that, uh, uh, when I was campaigning, uh, one of the ladies, uh, in Bridgeton, um, who's got quite a bit, bit of experience in municipal, municipal governance, uh, told me that in order for me to be successful, I needed to surround myself, uh, with good people, and, uh, that's what I've done. And, um, what I wanted to do was tell you, uh, about these years of service of good people, so, combined up here, the, the council members have forty-six and a half years of experience. I think that's great. Uh, me, myself, um, I have thirteen years, uh, of, of elected official experience, and then I calculated, uh, our department heads and our city administrator together, they have seventy-one years of experience, also take in the consideration, council member Hood's, uh, forty-four years of service to the city on the, on the Bridgeton Police Department. And then, uh, I also asked our city attorney, he's been working, uh, doing work for the city for twenty-eight years, twenty-four years, is the, the city attorney. Anyway, uh- Anyway, I believe I've done that. We, we have good people, and like councilmember Luther alluded to, the person to her right, she was talking about me, that's, that's one of my sayings. I always say we have a lot of work to do, and we do. It won't ever end. We always continue learning. My father told me that there's two things that nobody can ever take away from you, and one of them is your religion, and the other one is education. So all of us up here, I think, continue learning day in and day out in our jobs, or are going through continuing ed courses and things of that nature. But we all have the best interest of the city, and when I say the city, I include the residents, the businesses, and the employees. We all have the best interest of the city in mind and at heart, so just remember that. It's, it's my honor and my privilege to serve all of you and serve the city, and I love my job. I will always say that I love my job. So as always, I have an open door. I'll answer phone calls, emails, and I just want to make sure that everybody's taken care of. With that in mind, at the last council meeting, I brought up three words that I think are very important to us in looking at the job that we do here, and I'm going to repeat those again. And I think we can always make improvements, no matter how good we are, in these areas. One is being responsive, one is being efficient, and the third one, being timely. So we're going to continue and work on that day in and day out here, and make it better for everybody. I too want to thank the chief for the invite to the Slapka Memorial Prayer Breakfast, and I told him after that breakfast, every year it becomes more and more emotional for me. When you sit there and you, you read the names of all the fallen officers from back in the 1800s up on the screen, it's just, it's just emotional. I know the police department catches a lot of flack, you know, from various individuals and, and, you know, people, not only our police department, but all police departments, but they're there when we need them. They're there to take a bullet for us. They're there to be in an accident. You know, they're, they're trying to get rid of the criminals for us and keep us safe. So public safety will always be my, my number one priority here in the City of Bridgeton. So you have my word on that. Thank you. I also want to say that I want to thank Crystal here for jumping in, and, you know, she kind of jumped into the fire, and she's doing a great job. We're very fortunate to have her aboard, and Karen has been helping her along in some of the city clerk duties and learning those duties and responsibilities. Last night, we had a Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting, and that, that board is just phenomenal. There is one member that is, is asked to resign, and that's Mr. Tornatori. So if any of the council members have anybody in, in mind that they would like to have me consider to be nominated to fill that position on that board, please let me know. I've asked Crystal also to, once again, start getting together some articles for another edition of the brief, which was suspended last year after our previous executive assistant left us. So she's working on that. She's asked the department heads to provide her information that would go out in the brief. The brief, again, is the electronic version of our, our newsletter, and that would probably be about monthly, I hope, so. The banner is quarterly, as you might know, but in between, we'll be getting additions of the brief. And I want to expand it to businesses also, so the more email addresses we can get from residents and from anybody, actually, that wants to receive that electronically and business emails, I think the, the more information that we'll be able to get out and provide as, as a city. A couple of weeks ago, April 23rd, I was invited, as well as Chief Masadi, by News Talk 101.9 that was doing a live show at Berry Hill Golf Course from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to come in for an interview. So they interviewed both of us, both of those interviews, I think mine was about 13 minutes. You can go on their website and listen to those interviews. And as far as I've heard, I did a good job. I'll let, I'll let you be the judge. I want, also want to thank my significant other, Sally. She's been there side by side with me for the past year. She puts up with a lot, and I want to thank her for that. And I appreciate her coming up and helping with some, putting on some of the boutonnieres and the council people. As a matter of fact, the council members that don't know, the ladies, you do take those roses home with you, and Crystal, please take yours home, and of course, the guys, take them home with you too. So it's been a nice evening. It's been a good year for me. I know I still have a lot to learn and have a lot to look forward to, but I think all in all, that we're doing a good job. We're continuing where the former mayor left off, and we're moving Bridgeton forward. And we're going to be concentrating on a lot of economic development in the next, in the next year or two, so look out for some more good things to be coming to Bridgeton. I appreciate your support, and at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Okay. Motion's made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. We're adjourned.